We would like to call the Planning Commission regular meeting to order at this time. We would ask that everyone please stand for a silent prayer or meditation, after which then I will lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Joanne, will you please do the roll call? Commissioner Becerra?
Here.
Commissioner Hang?
Here.
Commissioner Lewis?
Here.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Here.
Chair Williams?
Present.
What the record shows, all five Plen commissioners are present. Thank you. This evening, we have our minutes from our regular meeting of May 14, 2024. Do any of the commissioners have any changes at this time? Okay. Seeing none, the minutes are adopted as presented. We now reach the part in our meeting where we allow for oral communications. I have one card. If that gentleman will please come forward, you have five minutes.
Yes, good evening. I've come to an understanding that your building and safety inspector has been harassing and intimidating a neighbor of mine here in West Covina for a few months, actually going into a couple of years. The last time we were here, he brought it to the attention of your fat Chinese mayor, Wu. And Mr. Wu wouldn't address the issue, that why were you asking this individual person, Hispanic, Mexican, American? Who fucking cares what he is? He's a minority. He has more than one car. They're all registered. They're in his property, not blocking anyone's access to a sidewalk. And some white motherfucker from building and safety has the nerve, audacity, to go there and ask him, no, not ask him, tell him he's going to be cited for having multiple vehicles that are registered to be removed off his property and placed in some type of garage. Now whose fucking business is that of this committee here? Because you need to go back and review some of your ordinances on this fucking shit of harassment on this issue. Because when he came out of that federal court with a smile on his face telling me that he fucking won this case against West Covina for harassment by building and safety inspectors, and especially the young piece of shits that go to his house and knock on the door, and they leave a note on his door and run away from him? What the fuck's that all about? I thought we were all supposed to be adults and neighborly and learn to communicate effectively by saying, hey, white motherfucker, come back here. I want to know what this letter's about. Well, he knew what it was about. It was about some racial fucking minority shit that you as individuals and for all I know Ms. Becerra there understands that a fucking wetback has as much rights as a nigger like me to communicate with people about why we being harassed and intimidated.
Chair, I just want to say, I don't want to take it right from his time.
Yeah, but I have the force, sir, and the time is running.
There's a policy on YouTube where you're not supposed to use the time.
Let him finish.
Well, the reason why, the reason why I'm speaking like a white nigger is because I have a right to speak like one. I have every motherfucking right to speak what's on my mind and not be a fucking hypocrite to the First Amendment, Mr. Gutierrez, whoever the fuck you are. Because I know under 42 SC 1983 and under other conditions of law, especially like, because I keep emphasizing "nigger like me too", which comes from Brandenburg versus Ohio, U.S. 395 444 1969, in which a K.K. Klan was speaking to a reporter about the business of the Klan. And because some racist motherfuckers decide to punish him for words speaking out against the government, you decide to arrest him, put him in jail. Because you see, you have one officer back there. And if I'm saying something so offensive, so threatening, why isn't that officer up on my ass like some white nigger with a gun to my head saying, hey, motherfucker, don't be using that language? But when your officers approach people that if they feel black or brown, stand back, get back, no, you don't speak that way. They go, hey, motherfucker, I told you get your ass to the ground now. Put him on the ground with a knee on his neck. And what happens to the poor person? Either get injured or die. So the reason why I speak the way I speak is because a white nigger and a brown nigger and some fucking asshole judge by the name of Gary C. Edo from Carson allowed me to be heard in court when I told him, yeah, those four fucking bitches accused me of allegedly sending some bad information through the website, which isn't true. So if I can't say what someone accused me of saying, then I'm not American. Now, if I could speak like an American and hold back the profundity, then what, that makes me educated, professional? No, it does not. That's the reason why this world is so fucked up. Simple five faggots walking around here waving a flag, trying to be what you're not. God hates faggots. God will always hate you if you're different from what God, your fucked up Bible says. Because each time I come to these meetings, you have some fucking asshole up there from some church giving prayer. That's great, but keep your prayer to yourself. This is a fucking meeting. This is a fucking place where live people speak because they're tired of the nonsense and bullshit of interruptions. Thank you.
Moving right along. I see that tonight we have no public hearing items at this time. Joanne, will you please present the first non-hearing item?
Good evening, Honorable Chair Williams, members of the Planning Commission. The item before you is the Planning Commission email account. We have the IT Division manager here, Will. He will be going over the information regarding the email accounts.
Good evening, Commissioners, Honorable Chair. My name is Will Treheal. I'm the IT manager for the city of West Covina. In your agenda packet, you have the Computer System Use Administrative Policy for your review. The city's Computer System Use Administrative Policy defines the rules and guidelines for using city-owned computers and resources such as email, internet software, and systems. This policy applies to all city employees, contractors, interns, and any other individuals who use the city's network, devices, and technology. The policy aims to protect both city assets and the privacy of the employees. As you can see, the policy is actually a little bit outdated, but rest assured that it's currently being updated through its proper process and chain of command. This is why you have the Computer System Use Policy Received Acknowledgement, which is this sheet here. This acknowledgement pretty much acknowledges that you have received a copy of the Computer System Use Administrative Policy and states that you understand that the city may update the policy at any time. Signing this acknowledgement will enable you to receive a city-assigned email account at westcovina.org to do everyday city business with. You will be able to access your email via the internet through a browser of your choice. Once this acknowledgement is signed and provided to your reporting director, the email account will be created and provided to your director's dissemination so that she can provide you with the credentials needed to log into your account. Additionally, with your new email address and credentials, you will receive a how-to login to your city-assigned email account walkthrough document. And it'll pretty much give you directions on how to login from whatever website you're using. I'll go ahead and open it up for any questions regarding the city-assigned email accounts.
Is it a case that we'll need to change our password every, is it 90 days or?
Correct. So it's every 90 days, as you said. And that's for security purposes. So it'll just ask you to put in your new password that you want, and it pretty much updates it.
Any other commissioners have any questions?
I just had one question. The policy states that employees are to delete all electronic messages, including those that are required to be retained, so long as a procedure for retaining a copy of that message are followed as set forth above, at least once a week, including messages in the sent mail folder. What does that, practically speaking, what does that mean?
This is a policy that was created in about, I think, 2000. So I think that's what the process was before. Obviously, technology is way more advanced now, so you don't really have to do that anymore. So they wanted you to print out and keep a copy and then delete it. I guess the process before.
Okay. So what is the process now?
It doesn't matter. It's going to be retained regardless.
Okay, all right. Well, that's good. I'm glad to hear that. I just thought it was a little strange. I've never seen a policy that says you're required to delete all electronic messages every week.
Right. I think it's for storage purposes.
Okay. And that's no longer an issue?
Not at all. It's all cloud-based now.
All right.
Yeah.
Perfect. That's all I had.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you. This is just to receive in five. Okay. Moving on. Item number two, we're going to have a study session. Joanne, will you be presenting the second item?
Yes. And I think it's a record today. We don't have this. I think this is the only Planning Commission meeting in a long time where we don't have a PowerPoint presentation. But we'll just do verbal.
Okay.
So this is regarding the Planning Commission standing meeting rules. It's vital to establish procedures and rules in conducting meetings in order to ensure that meetings are productive, allowing anyone wishing to speak to be heard, and allows decision-making, the decision-making body to render very clear decisions without any confusion. The last time the Planning Commission reviewed the standing rules was in 2013. It was first adopted in 1995 and then revised in '03 and last reviewed in 2013. So it's been over 10 years since this, since this body has last reviewed the standing rules. So it's been long overdue. One of the items, one of the items that we're proposing be changed is the rules pertaining to the secretary of the commission. The current rule states that the secretary is the planning, the planning director. Since planning is no longer its own department, there isn't, there hasn't been a planning director in a long time. So it's proposed that it be changed to committee development director, deputy committee development director, or designee. Since the current rules does not provide any leeway on the designee, it's important to allow for that flexibility in case the director, deputy committee development director, is not able to attend the meeting. Another item that is proposed to be changed is to update, to update the rules as it applies to the Roberts Rules of Order. Since the Roberts Rules of Order is constantly changing, it's important that the rules also be updated to reflect any changes from the Roberts Rules of Order. If the Planning Commission has any questions, staff and the city attorneys are available to answer.
Do any of my fellow commissioners have any questions regarding the rule changes?
I have one question, just pertaining to keeping us surprised of any updates on Roberts Rules. I'll say this. I haven't seen any updates come to me in, I don't know, maybe 10 years or so. So I would certainly like to see an update provided, you know, not just to me, but every commissioner who serves in the city and probably to the council to some degree. That way, we can all stay updated on that. That would be my only sort of aside request.
So in the last 10 years that it hasn't, these rules have not been reviewed. So we're currently on the 12th edition of the Roberts Rules of Order. So when they republish new editions and tweak a few of the rules, we'll go ahead and update as we go along.
Staff also plans on, upon speaking to the deputy city attorney, staff also plans on bringing the Planning Commission standing meetings rules annually to the Planning Commission after, after the rotation, just as a refresher, and also to discuss any changes, if any changes have been made.
Any other questions? Okay. At this time, we will now ask if there are any commissioners who would like to report on any or make any comments on the items?
Chair, sorry. For, may I speak?
No.
For, for this particular, for this particular item, if, if there are any changes that the Planning Commission would like to see in, in the document, just to let staff know. And then, since this was initially adopted through REZO, at the next, at the next meeting, we would bring it to the Planning Commission for formal adoption of the resolution. In consent.
I think we got that. Thank you. Do any of the commissioners have anything to report or any matters to discuss?
I was just going to comment on one thing, going back to the study session item, if we can. On the privilege of closing debate portion that's set forth in, I believe it's item 10. It states the commissioner making, or the commission member making the motion shall have the privilege of closing debate by calling for a vote on the motion. And once the roll call vote has commenced, it shall continue without interruption until completed. My question there is, with regard to the privilege of closing the debate, how is that, how is that to be effectuated? If there's a motion and a second, at that point in time, the member making the motion says, we need to vote now? Or how is it that staff wants us to address that?
I will happily address that. Under the Roberts Rules of Order, the business of this commission comes before the commission by way of motion. So under Roberts Rules, a motion is made to open up the item for discussion. So there is a motion that begins the discussion, and the person who makes that motion has the privilege of closing debate. And the way to do that, under Roberts Rules, is to call for a vote. So it's the motion, discussion, and each member can speak once before another person can speak again for a second time. And once the motion for a vote is made, the vote goes through to completion. And this is an operational difference of parliament, which is generally hundreds of persons involved, versus a small local body such as this, and especially under California, where during COVID, there were several executive orders that came out that changed how votes were taken, how attendance was, you know, how the meetings were conducted. And that has become part of the Permanent Brown Act. So Brown Act allows for roll call votes, and that takes a little bit longer than what was originally contemplated under the Roberts Rules. So if you do watch parliamentary procedure in large bodies, it is a verbal vote, and it is a voice of all in favor, say aye. And then you have all the people who are in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say no, all at once. And then those abstaining, abstain all at once. So what happens is, it's usually a three-second process, maybe. And what, what changed is how it operates in California with smaller bodies under the Brown Act. Specifically, this change came about in little steps with executive orders that now are part of the actual Brown Act with the roll call voting. So once, in theory, in the actual practice of parliamentary procedure, it would happen very quickly. Once a vote is requested, it is taken, and it is taken at that moment. So it's usually a very, very quick process. So there is very little room for anything to get interrupted. So to preserve that essence of the process with the Roberts Rules, and that has been consistent with Roberts Rules, we're kind of going back to the basics of Roberts Rules here and trying to stick with what is in the Roberts Rules and functionally create this, this parallel of how it works in large-body parliamentary procedure.
So just to clarify, we're required to do roll call votes under the Brown Act currently, as it currently stands? No longer is it all those in favor, say aye, all those opposed, nay?
To the extent that everything was changed during COVID for teleconferencing and to accommodate that, there is roll call voting, yes.
I just, I just want to confirm that. I don't think a lot of people understand that that changed.
That did change. And now it is actually embodied in the California government code. So to the extent, you know, there are some bodies within California that still meet in person, no broadcast, no Zoom, no Facebook. You know, it's just live in person. And in those situations, I think there is a little bit slightly difference because the teleconferencing section does not apply if it is not done by teleconference. But to the extent that there is ability for an online video forum or a call-in forum, things like that, there are different rules that would apply for meetings that will use that technology. So, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
And then when it says it shall continue without interruption until completed, and what happens if, what happens if a commissioner wants to make their own motion on top of the motion that's already being heard?
If there is a vote ongoing, the motion would have to hold until the vote is done and the outcome of that vote is finalized. And once the result is known, then if that motion fails, there can be another motion. If it passes, it just passes. So if a present motion that is being voted on, it doesn't interrupt. So you need to know the outcome of that before there would be a different motion made, a main motion.
So that motion should be made before the roll call?
Correct. If there is a substitute or modifying motion, you know, if there is a, the main motion would be, for example, to pass a resolution, you know, to approve something like a CUP, then that would be the main motion. If you have an amended motion, a subsidiary motion, that would have to be made before the voting begins so that it can be debated and there can be additional discussion. But once it is called for a vote, the person who calls for the vote has that ability to terminate the discussion. So that's, that's how, we're going back to Roberts Rules and going back to the basics, sort of, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? So I just want to make sure that, so we call a motion. After the motion, there will be discussion. And then after discussion would be the voting.
There would be a motion to call for vote. So the actual vote happens upon a motion. And so if there is discussion and the person who makes the motion has the privilege, and that is the privilege of the person making the motion to end the discussion and request a vote at that time.
So when does the discussion happen?
After a motion is made to open the item for discussion.
So you're being, is this on here, like all those specifics?
No, the, the.
You're being specific about this, but you're not being specific about other stuff on the ruse, so.
The reason why that is specifically mentioned is because it is a California very specific thing to accommodate the Brown Act and the government code that specifically operates for the roll call voting within California. And so under Roberts Rules, it is applied in very many different bodies, even internationally. So the California Brown Act would not apply to them. So this is a specific way for us to address the Brown Act requirements and still adhere to the Roberts Rules of Order.
Isn't it similar to what we were doing? I mean, we, staff would read the report, and then chairperson would open up for discussion. And then a motion would be made. Isn't that similar to what we do already?
It is similar, but it doesn't adhere to the Roberts Rules. And I don't know, and if it is the will of this commission to specifically write in an overriding rule that says the chair has the ability to open up an item for discussion bypassing the Roberts Rules, that's okay. But the default is Roberts Rules of Order. So if there is a desire by this commission to specifically carve out that rule and say that opening the discussion can be either by motion or by the chair opening up the item for discussion, that can be adapted. But again, the Roberts Rules defaults to an item is brought before the commission for consideration and debate through a motion.
Just to sort of clarify, maybe this is something I think a lot of people can, can understand in the context of, you know, understanding what's going on in the U.S. Senate. Effectively, what, effectively what calling, calling for the roll call vote is going to be is effectively the equivalent of a motion for cloture that you would have in the Senate, where you're required to have 60 votes in order to move on to a vote on the substantive issue. So effectively, that's, that's what this, that's what this just confirms, which is already in existence under the, under the current iteration of the Roberts Rules, correct?
Correct. Under Roberts Rules, the motion to call a vote is essentially the close of the debate. So that is the privilege of the person making that motion. So again, in, in operation with larger bodies such as Senate and Assembly and Congress, you know, it is a much quicker process because it is a verbal vote, and it's a large body. So they have this, a more general rule, and then we are adapting it to the small local body and this specifically a five-member commission, but also adhering to the Brown Act. So there's all these little nuances. We're trying to comply with multiple laws at the same time.
But also, rules for thee, but not for me.
Any further questions?
I'll just, I mean, is there a way to integrate some of the language that's in the law for the Robert Rules of Orders into this description? Because I just looked up, I mean, I just looked up specifically the voting part of Robert Rules of Orders, and it's, I think other cities have it written differently and how it's written.
If this body wants.
This is more specific.
Right. And this is to just mimic the process that happens in the larger body, using the same Roberts Rules of Parliamentary Order and equating that verbal vote to what the bodies in California use under Brown Act, which is the roll call vote. So once the voting has begun in Senate or Congress or Assembly, it is a verbal vote, and it's generally very quick. And it is, you know, the yays, the noes, and the extensions go very, very quickly. And, and we're just trying to equate that to the roll call voting process. So the voting process is still intact. But the Roberts Rules of Order are not written in law, but the requirements of Brown Act are. So we're trying to adapt the operational guidelines that the Roberts Rules provide. And again, it is up to this commission. If you have a desire to specifically change something or carve something out so that this process reflects what you would like your meeting to run, there is a way to write that in very specifically to, to, I guess, override the default of the Roberts Rules. So if that is the desire of this commission, and again, the deputy director here has requested any of the comments, any things you would like to add in or change to be directed to staff so that it can be assembled and placed on the agenda for the next meeting. And then that can be discussed and requested for an action via resolution out of. via resolution at a future meeting. But this is just to kind of bring to you the, the need for a review, since it has been, I think, 10, 11 years since review. There have been multiple additions and new updates to the Roberts rules as well, but definitely the Brown Act. It has changed a lot. So, you know, with the intervening COVID and all of the executive orders that happened in between, we just kind of need to get caught up to what the Brown Act requires. So, and operationally, to kind of mesh that with how the commissions are operating. So that's what we're trying to do here.
So like, for example, I think there's, like I say, is, our motion is a little more specific. Well, some other cities mention can only be made by a member of the prevailing side of a previous vote. If seconded and passed, it rescends the previous vote and brings the motion back for discussion. A main motion, a motion must be made in second to initiate discussion on an issue. A limited amount of discussion may be allowed at the discretion of the chairman prior to a motion being made. Motions are projected onto a screen. I don't know, but it's a different specific.
Yeah, actually, number 11, which talks about motions to reconsider, that it actually is explained.
Does anyone else have any further questions? Well, enforcement of decorum. So it says, a chairperson shall advise the persons that unless the disruption ceases, they will be escorted from council chambers by the sergeant of arms if refusal of escort is made. The persons causing disruption of the meeting will be arrested. Now, who does this apply to?
I believe it applies to anyone that is interrupting and disrupting and preventing the business of the commission from proceeding.
I would like to have more time to review this. So if it could be brought back for the next meeting, I don't know how the commissioners feel.
How do the other commissioners feel?
I'm okay with bringing it. One other thing that I want to talk about is that when you make a motion, and then you open up for discussion, for public discussions, whether it's for it or against it, when, at what point in time does the commissioner have a debate about this?
So when an item comes up and it is, you know, you go down the agenda and you say, okay, we're moving on to item number three, which is a CUP for whatever. Then at that point, the chair, for example, could say, do I have a motion to open up the discussions? And then there's a motion made, a second. And at that point in time, you would pause and take input from the public because the public gets to speak on every item. And then if there are clarifying questions, there can be clarifying questions asked, and then it can be moving on in order to all of the commission for debate. And after the debate, there would be even, even in the middle of a debate, if there is a motion for a vote, a motion calling the vote, then the vote would happen, and it is the close of the debate. But if the debate takes turns, everyone has a chance to speak, and all discussions are done at that point, there would be a motion to call vote, or the chair can call the vote, and if it's ready to vote, it'll proceed to a vote. So it would be motion, public comment, any clarifying questions, discussion, vote, or motion to vote, vote.
Wouldn't public comment always come before any motion, particularly in a public hearing setting?
In the public hearing setting, it's basically the question, the issue is framed by the motion. So for the public to understand, okay, this is the topic. It is already on the agenda, and the recommended action is already in the agenda. So if there is a motion, it basically brings it up and opens the door for debate. It doesn't change the issue necessarily. It is still available for the public to know what topic is being discussed. And at that point in time, it still, as soon as the motion is made, it opens up the, the door for discussion and debate. And at that point, the public can speak on that particular item. And again, at the very beginning of the meeting.
I, I agree with you, but I think, I think linguistically, you, you may be causing some confusion indirectly. And I, and so, because you're referring to the item itself as, as a motion, which I understand. But I think, I think we all hear motion to approve or something along those lines, and that's how, that's how everyone up here might be thinking of this as a, as a motion in a very literal sense of I make a motion, as opposed to the item being the motion, and therefore debate coming after we make presentation of the item, and then going into the, into the actual substantive motion to approve, deny, whatever it is. Is, is that, am I misunderstanding, or?
As long as the public has an opportunity to present their concerns for, against, or anything related to that topic or that item before deliberation, that is okay. That is what the Brown Act requires. The public has a right to speak on every single item. So as long as it happens before, it can be, as soon as the item is called, the public comment can happen. Then there could be a motion to open up discussion, and then there could be discussion, and then a motion to call the vote, and vote. And it could proceed that way. And if the, if this commission prefers to have the comments ahead of any motion, that can be written into the specifics of your meeting rules so that we can have a specific order of how each item will be handled.
Okay, so that's actually something I, I think ought to be very clear because I don't think we have ever conducted a meeting at, at least as far as this planning commission has, has been around. And I've watched planning commissions since I was a small child in this city. I may be the weird person here for doing that, but I'll say this. Every single time there was public comment, and then the substantive motion that was brought by an individual commissioner was, was made after the close of public comment. So I, I want to, I want to make sure that, that I understand and that everybody, that everybody else understands, is this, is, is, is what you are suggesting, that a motion being made, let's say, I motion for approval of X or Y, and, and Commissioner Gutierrez seconds it, and then call for a vote. There, that, that the, the typical way that that is done would be, under the Roberts rules, would be that public comment would happen right then and there?
It happens before the deliberations of the commission. So as long as it is before the deliberation or discussion or debate, they're all the equivalent process. As long as the public comment happens before that, that is the most important part, and that's how we observe.
I don't understand. When does the deliberation take place?
The deliberation is your discussion.
Okay, that's after the public speaks.
Correct. So the public gets to speak before the deliberation so that the body has a chance to absorb, consider, and listen to the public before deciding and discussing.
Do we have to make a motion to deliberate now, or no? We just, she opens discussion.
She would open discussion. As long as there is a motion, there's, the debate can happen amongst the commission. So there is a different portion where the public can speak before deliberation. And whether the motion happens before the public comment or right after, as long as the public comment is taken before the deliberation by the body and the discussion and debate amongst the commission prior to the vote, that's the order. So the public comment comes first, then the debate, then a decision. So as long as that comes before, it can be after a motion or before a motion. And it's up to you how you want to articulate that in your specific rules.
Haven't we always done that? Have we been out of order?
I think there's a little bit confusion about motion. We use a lot of motion tonight. So like Commissioner Lewis was saying, that we normally, as commissioners, we say we motion approve or be motion to disapprove, but that's a motion. However, we're also used to the fact that agenda item number one, number two, number three, and then we would have, you know, staff would do the report, and then we would open up for public discussions, whether it's for it or against it. And then normally, the step that we normally forget to go through is the commissioners have a debate about it. And then right after that is when, after all the commissioners having their, whether they approve it or disapprove it, or like it or not like it, or having questions for staff or for some of the public. After that is when we normally make the motion to approve or disapprove. Someone make a motion, and then there's someone who need to have a second. Another commissioner needs a second. Traditionally, that was sort of like the procedures that I guess I'm used to after several years. Because when you say motion, at the beginning, motion, which is to us is an agenda item number one, number two, or number three, or number four, whatever it is that we have on the list. For example, one, we could talk about alcohol. One, we could talk about agenda item number one. It could be alcohol-related, a store-related. Item number two could be some building project, a home building project versus item number four. It could be, I don't know, couldn't think of anything right now, school. So that's, to me, is like a, instead of a motion one, motion two, motion three, that would be to us is an agenda item number one, number two, number three. And then, that's what I'm used to after a few years, that we would have staff do the discussion on that agenda items. And then we have open up to public meetings. After the public meeting is done, then that's when the commission, commissions have their discussions. And where the commission sometime have questions for staff or question for the public. And at the end, this is the portion that we sometime forget to go through. And then we just run straight into voting before the discussion of the commission. So the debate, you call it a debate or a?
Debate, discussion, deliberation, they're all equivalent to the same thing where the body discusses before taking an action. So the.
It seems like lately we have been missing that debate portion, it appears. And then we just go straight into voting.
So this is the opportunity for each of you to take this home, and because this is a study session, go through it and say, you know, what works operationally? Because what has been operationally the norm hasn't been written down in the rules. So if this is the commission's desire to do it as calling the item, having public comment, or having the presentation so there's more information to the public, and then taking public comment, then having a motion, and then a discussion amongst the commissioners, and then a vote, that is okay. That is, you can do that in the rules. It's just a matter of, because it's not written into your meeting rules, the default goes to the Roberts rules, which is what I was discussing. So in the default, without any specific mention of how you would like to handle business, the current bylaws say any of those will default non-specific procedures will follow Roberts rules. So if you have a specific process in mind that works and that you would like to see articulated aside from and kind of overriding the Roberts rules default, please put your edits in there, put some comments in there, and get that back to staff so we can get it crafted into the next round of the draft bylaws for you to consider and perhaps approve. It may be a couple of meetings. This may not be like a one-and-done meeting kind of thing because this is how you do business. And so it is up to this commission to decide how you want to, you know, conduct your business. And if it's not strict adherence to Roberts rules, then I recommend that it is written into your meeting bylaws or your meeting rules so that your rules that apply to this planning commission is what governs. So if it's silent and there's nothing specifically mentioned, it would default to Roberts rules. So as it sits today, there is no specific mention. But if it is the desire of this commission to have the item, the staff present factual information and do the presentation, taking public comment, and then motion, and then the planning commission discussion, then a vote, you can specify in the rules, the meeting rules, to have it in that order. I would just recommend that it's written somewhere.
Thank you. I'm not sure that we haven't had discussions. I've noticed that the chair will normally ask, is there any comments by the commission? Or anybody has anything they want to ask or questions? And if we say no, there is no deliberation.
And there may be none. There, but it is an opportunity for the commission to discuss and deliberate. Yeah.
And then I have another question. And then for enforcement of decorum, it says the chairperson has the authority to do, to do the X, Y, and Z, all the, all the different descriptions that are on, under enforcement decorum. Now, what, I'm not, this is, this is not relating to our current chair, but I'm just saying, for years to come, if, let's just say, a chair wanted to remove someone from the audience, but a majority body disagrees with that decision, couldn't that majority body overrule the chairperson?
If the chair is presiding over the meeting, the chair has the authority to, to either call recess or deem it a disruption, and that is the privilege of the chair. But a disruption would be a disruption that prevents the body from conducting business. It wouldn't be just simply an opinion.
I'm talking about like the last resort, about removing someone or arresting someone.
And that, it's very rare. It's very, it would be very disruptive so that the business cannot continue. And that is usually when it is going to be triggered, is if there, let's say, for example, there is a emergency. If we have.
But you're saying, but you're saying three votes could not override the chairperson on a decision like that?
On procedure, on just running the meeting?
No, no, not, not that part, the last resort part. So let's just say, let's just say, and again, this is not about our current commission. I'm just saying for years to come, if there was a chairperson who made, let's just say, a radical move to remove someone just because, or because they didn't like that person.
Then it would be a point of order. Then it would be up to another commissioner to say.
It would be a point of order.
A point of order that it is improper.
And then it requires, or required three votes at that time, right? Or something like that?
It would be a motion, a point of order and a discussion, and going back to the rules to see if it complies with the rules. Again, the disruption would be severe enough. For example, if there was an earthquake right now and things are falling off from the ceiling, that is a disruption enough to cause a stoppage of business. And at that point, it is, it is the privilege of the chair to recess or adjourn and to say, we have a disruption, we cannot continue.
Oh, yeah, I agree with that. I'm just saying the last resort part. So can that, so what you just indicated, can that be integrated under this, under this enforcement and decorum division of the document, as I guess, let me.
If you have proposed language, I would definitely urge each and every one of the commissioners.
You just, you just said it about point of order, and then.
That's indeed in the Roberts.
Calling for a motion, so.
Yeah, those default to Roberts rules.
I know, but we're being specific. So currently, we'd be specific about that, too, as a, as an additional letter on the bullet points.
I would love some clarification. If you can specifically pen it and get it to staff so that it can be in draft form of what you would like. I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth. So I would like to request that you specifically request an addition that specifies under this circumstance what would happen. That way, it can be brought back to the commission for discussion before an adoption.
Because I know, I know there was a matter at the city council level where something like that occurred. But I'm not going to go into specifics, but something like that occurred. But, okay, but yeah, sounds good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. So it's understood, if you have any suggestions for language, then you'll get that to staff. And we're at least looking at continuing this item to our next planning commission meeting.
This item is just a study session. So unless you wanted an additional study session, it would be receive and file today. There is no action item for today. But this is a way for you to see what is currently, as of the last revision of 2013, of what was in there and what the proposed changes may be. And if you have additional changes, definitely, this is your opportunity to get additional markups and things that you would like to see in the next version of the bylaws. Again, that anything that you don't want to default to Roberts rules, I strongly recommend putting it in writing for staff to be able to incorporate all of that and to present it to you at an actual agendized meeting where you can have a full discussion and then take action to either amend by, you know, adopting a resolution, because it was adopted by resolution at the beginning, that amendment would be by resolution.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. So, I would like an additional discussion or study session for the next meeting to occur, if the commission's okay with that.
Okay. Through the chair.
Yes, Joanne.
From, from the comments, from the planning commissioner comments, I, in, in my notes, I, I believe that the, the planning commissioner has an interest in changing the, I guess, the, the way motions are taken or public hearing items are heard from the, from the Roberts rules of order to have staff, the first point is to have, present, do the presentation, public hearing, and then questions, and then deliberation, and then call for the vote. Is that correct? Or is it something that you still want to discuss further?
No, I thought that that was basically, I think, the commissioners wanting to make sure that the public had an opportunity to speak and we had a chance to take in their information as well as the staff's presentation before we went into our deliberation. And then, after our deliberation, then making a motion for a vote.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for the clarification.
And then, I'll just add on one other thing. If we're going to have another study session, I do think it would be helpful if we had, you know, maybe along with our packet, PDF copy of the most current Roberts rules of order sent over to us, if that is at all possible. That way, that way, we can understand where, where we will be deviating potentially.
Would you like the actual book, which is currently about an inch and a half thick? Or would you like a summary? Or just kind of understand what it is? Because.
I've seen, I've seen a couple of, I've seen a couple of different iterations of this. I've seen sort of like the pamphlet kind of thing. Do you know what I'm talking about?
I know.
The bare bones with no commentary?
Yeah, but it's, it's, it's instructive at the very least. It may not be the, the best thing in the world because it's not annotated or anything like that, as much as I would love to see that. But, you know, at least, at least it gives something. And I don't know whether or not there's, you know, publication issues for giving out a copy of the Roberts rules because it's proprietary or some, some nonsense.
I think that would be a good idea. Yeah, that would be a good idea. At the state level, because I was part of two different state commissions appointed by two governors, the state, at the state level, they actually give you a little, you know, it's like a four-by-six booklet that has, I think, some of the key points of the Robert rules of order. It's really, it's really educational. They give it to, most of the time, all the commissioners who are appointed to the state get a book like that.
So, I'm getting that you don't want the whole book. You want a summary.
Well, I want the whole book, but.
I'll leave the whole book.
I just want to be clear of what, what it was, what would help you to provide feedback and be able to craft the rules as you would like it. So, I just didn't want to overwhelm you. And if you didn't want the whole book, then, you know, I guess we can work with, with staff to get you the materials you need to be able to review the default of how the Roberts rules operate in large parliamentary bodies so that you would know what the default is. And then, you can customize to how you want this commission to take items in what order. This commission does have that ability.
I think there, I think there may even be a book that's, I think it's like Robert rules of orders for appointed officials or something like that. I think there's a book out there for that.
I can find what you're talking about. Yeah, I mean, I'm not, if you do want the whole book, please let Joanne know if you, if you really want the 12th edition full annotated.
Do the commissioners have any comments or reports or anything that you would like to make the rest of us commissioners aware of?
I have one question. I just wanted to see if, if the assistant, city attorney could either now or at the next meeting, go over some of the procedures. Obviously, everyone has the right to freedom of speech and, and obviously, their speech should not ever be turned, I mean, cut off from speaking. And they have that right to, to that freedom of speech based upon our great United States Constitution. The only thing I was worried about earlier was the profanity because there's children at, kids at home viewing the video online. And I know in the past at city council meetings, I think the chair will give, or the mayor will give two warnings to stop the profanity. And if that person did not stop, we're going to have a blackout. If that person didn't stop that profanity, then the chairperson had to mute them, mute the mic that's up on the audience. They, they're able to continue to speak. We're not stopping their speech here, but we're just muting the online, online feed. So, I know at the council level, they, they have done that, the mayor.
I'm not sure what policy applies, but I will have to look into that to see if it's a broadcasting or rebroadcasting type of issue that is a broadcast issue versus freedom of speech first, you know, the First Amendment protections that are afforded to everyone who comes to speak before government bodies. So, again, that would be a possibly technical issue rather than a legal issue.
I know there was a couple of times at the city council level that the mayor had to mute them, so.
Okay, could look into that.
Great.
Okay. At this time, moving to item number four. Joanne, do you have anything to report regarding the community development department?
I do have general city event information to bring up. On May 30, on May 30th, 2024, at the West Covina Sportsplex, there will be a health and wellness expo in the San Gabriel Valley Senior Softball Tournament from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And everybody's invited to attend. Palm View Community Center Open House, an anniversary will take place on June 4th, 2024, from 10:00 AM till 12:00 PM. And there will be another paper shredding event on Saturday, June 15th, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at Cortez Community Park and Senior Center. The summer concert series for the city of West Covina will begin here at the Civic Center on Wednesday, June 19th at 6:00 PM. And it will continue until July 3rd.
Are there any city council actions or report, to report on?
Yes. At the last city council meeting of May 21st, 2024, the city council adopted Resolution Number 2224-08 that approved the final parcel map, number 83155, located at 2539 East Garvey Avenue North. This is the, the, the final map for the, for the Diamond Plaza Shopping Center where the supermarket is, was approved to be located in over there on Garvey and Citrus, near the, the former Nissan dealership that's now going to be the Toyota. It was previously two parcels, and it was consolidated into one through the parcel map process.
You mentioned supermarket. What, do you know the name of the supermarket yet or not yet?
Not, not officially, no. But they did apply for a alcohol license. And the alcohol license is for Amazon Fresh.
Okay.
If there is no other matters to discuss, then I would like to motion that our planning commission meeting adjourn. The time now is 8:05 PM.